Downtown tonight, it feels good to see people out on the streets enjoying each other, sharing friendship and understanding. And thank you for the blessing that you're bringing to our community as we give it guidance and direction in this century. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, we ask for your blessings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Gibson, and Alderman Whitaker, second to the approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Ms. Whitby on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask without objection to council, before we go to communications, I know that Rosemary, I've met, we've got a presentation, MetLife Foundation is making a presentation to the Argentus CDC. We all know, you know, that organization, how proud we are of it. And I'd like to ask if Stephen Bradley and Harold Kennedy and Craig Adamson, our president, Rosemary Hamel and Chief Bradley will accept the award. The Argentus CDC, if I could ask y'all to come to the microphone, are you here? And then let me come down and share this excitement, that I'll kind of share what it's about from up here. Argentus CDC is one of seven groups in this country selected this year by MetLife Foundation to receive the Community Police Partnership Award. The award is given in recognition of our work with the North Little Rock Police Department in improving the safety and vitality of downtown and the mid-city neighborhoods in our community. And this award comes with some bucks, $10,000 to be exact. And we are in good company. The other winning communities are Minneapolis, Seattle, Los Angeles, Dorchester, Massachusetts, Providence, Rhode Island, and Toledo, Ohio. And I guess if this is the proper order, Stephen Bradley of the Greater Little Rock List. Stephen, would you be the first one to take the microphone and share your comments with us? We want to really recognize our police department, our city attorney Paul Sussky, obviously the CDC, Code Enforcement, Gardner Memorial Methodist Church, Habitat for Humanity, and our safe team along with Officer Andrew Miles. So, Mr. Bradley, microphone's yours.
Thank you. Mayor Hayes, members of the city council. I'm Stephen Bradley. I'm the program director for the Local Initiative Support Corporation office here in Greater Little Rock. And I'm honored to be here to recognize one of your own. First of all, established in 1979, the Local Initiative Support Corporation is the largest community development intermediary in the United States. We began operations in the Little Rock, North Little Rock area in 1992. And we worked to channel loans, grants, and assistance to five community development corporations better known as CDCs. We believe by supporting and strengthening nonprofit resident-led organizations like Argentus CDC, LISC helps build communities. Second, LISC recognizes that comprehensive approaches to community revitalization is what really works. And through our community safety initiative, we work with CDCs like Argentus CDC, the North Little Rock Police Department, and other key stakeholders, including the business community, to build formal long-term partnerships to address the issues of public safety, in particular in the downtown and mid-city areas of the city of North Little Rock. Lastly, the MetLife Foundation and LISC have partnered to recognize, sustain, and share the work of innovative partnerships between community groups and police to promote neighborhood safety and revitalization. Today, we're proud to welcome the MetLife Foundation of North Little Rock to recognize the work of the Argentus CDC.
This is Craig Adamson, and I'm Harold Kennedy. I'm representing MetLife Foundation. And our task is pretty simple. We're just here to present an award. These folks have done all the work, and we get to stand up here and say, here's the award, and thank you very much. We're gonna recognize the outstanding work of the Agenda Community Development Corporation and the North Little Rock Police Department and their partners in the downtown and mid-city neighborhood initiatives. This housing initiatives that's gone on here has been viewed as a model by other Arkansas communities and police departments. And now, it will rightfully be seen as a model for a national audience. And I'm delighted to present the 2003 MetLife Foundation Community Police Partnership Award to Rosemary Hamel.
It's very beautiful, and I want to thank you so much. I think probably in order of things, you would like to go ahead and make a presentation to Chief Bradley now, and then I have you.
That would work fine. The second presentation is to Danny Bradley, chief of the North Little Rock Police Department. Congratulations.
Well, I just wanted to say again, thank you to the MetLife Foundation and also to LISC. It's truly an honor to be among the seven in the United States to receive this prestigious award. I was so terrified over the word prestigious, but I made it. We also wish to thank Freddie Mac Foundation. They couldn't have a representative here tonight, but for a second year in a row, they have presented us with a $25,000 grant for our homeownership center. And we certainly appreciate their generosity and their support. The MetLife Award focuses on the partnerships with the police department, but there are others to recognize, as Mayor Hayes said. These are members of what we locally call the Halt Mid-City Neighborhood Housing Initiative. Without their contributions and commitments, we would not be receiving this award. You don't win national awards or claim without the friendship and support of your neighbors and friends. It would take all night to name everyone whose efforts have helped restore the safety and vitality to what were some of the most declining and troublesome neighborhoods in North Little Rock. The grant for which we applied was for the progress we made in the whole community. And for those who worked on that project, I would like to very quickly recognize them, although the mayor already did. But I'd like to ask representatives of those organizations to stand. We have the staff, the Community Development Agency, Mary Beth, she's been loyal to every meeting. Code Enforcement? They're all hiding. The City Attorney's Office?
Just tell them it's payday.
The North Little Rock Police Department and Officer Andrew Miles.
You're hiding too.
Isn't it Gardner Memorial Methodist Church, Joy Campbell? She's also with the Mid-City Crime Watch, Lawrence Johnson from ULR, who wrote one of the first papers that helped us be able to win this award. She did a beautiful job. Thank you, Lawrence. Habitat for Humanity, Metropolitan Bank and US Bank, Rebuilding Together Arkansas. And again, that would be, Mary Beth has been our representative on that, Ms. Bowman. The board and staff of Argentus CDC. And although everyone has worked on this, I would like to particularly note Steve Wynn-Stanley, our construction specialist, and Sarah Abel, who has called all these meetings together. And we met every two weeks, then got to once a month. But it's been one of the more beautiful things I've worked on, to have everyone come together and work together. Again, Mr. Craig Adamson, Harold Kennedy. And last but not least at all is Alderman Martin Gibson, Greg Yilding, all the city council, and Mayor Hayes, if you would stand please. And again, I'd like to say, we did all this together. And this is not just our award. It's all of our award. And thank you very much.
Well, we thank you, Rosemary. Your leadership is crucial to making things happen. So I think we all ought to applaud your efforts. And not least, we want to underline our appreciation again to MetLife for recognizing and their 10,000, recognizing your CDC, our CDC, and the $10,000 grant that you'll be giving. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Chief McCall? We've got a Fire Prevention Week coming up. So let me come out and present this to you, and then give you the microphone. If I can introduce your comments by saying that we all know, you know, public safety is a top priority in North Little Rock, and that safety from fire is important to both citizens and local firefighters who put their lives on the line with a response to every fire, and that the residents of North Little Rock must take action themselves to prevent fire if it strikes. We also are aware that safety, simple safety practices can help lower our fire death and injury rates. And also, whereas working smoke alarms on every level, a home fire escape plan and regular drills are essential for every household in North Little Rock. Whereas North Little Rock is joining the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, in teaching lifesaving messages in conjunction with Fire Prevention Week, whereas Fire Prevention Week 2003, the theme "When Fire Strikes, Get Out and Stay Out" is an important reminder for the citizens of North Little Rock. Whereas this week is commemorated all across North America and supported by the public safety efforts of fire departments, schools, and other safety advocates in conjunction with the NFPA. And therefore, I, Patrick Hayes, mayor of the city of North Little Rock, to proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2003, is Fire Prevention Week in the city of North Little Rock, and urge all of our citizens to heed the advice to install smoke alarms and plan and practice fire drills, and to remember the theme of Fire Prevention Week 2003, "When Fire Strikes, Get Out and Stay Out." Chief?
Mayor.
Thank you for all you do, what you do. And the microphone's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. We're doing this a couple of weeks early, but this is the last council meeting we have prior to Fire Prevention Week. And I want to reiterate what the mayor says about if you have a fire, get out and stay out. We try to teach this to all the grade school children. And I'd like to invite all the citizens to the corner of North Hills and McCain Boulevard on October the 7th for an evening of fun. Hot dogs, cokes. We'll have a lot of fire apparatus there for people to look at. We'll have a mini agility test for the children. And we are still involved with our smoke alarm program. If you think you need a smoke alarm in your home, don't hesitate to call. We'll be glad to come out and install one for you. Or check your current one. We're offering home safety inspections also. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman?
I just wanted to say that that's a free service. You might want to...
That is a free service with smoke alarms. Yes, it is.
Yeah, free smoke alarm and free, free check out your house. So there's no charge. Just call the fire department.
All you gotta do is let us know. We are currently hanging door hangers on every door in North Little Rock. That is bilingual, so our Spanish community can make contact with us also.
Chief, thank you very much. Is Chris Young present? There was a young man that I had a chance to be a part of teaching a speech class at a charter school in Marmell. And I invited him to come speak to our city council. He had indicated that he was coming. And I guess, you know, maybe he saw all the activity going on in Main Street, decided that he would enjoy walking up down the Main Street. But if Chris comes in and raises his hand, maybe we could say hello to him. But if not, maybe he can come back the next time. I offered him an opportunity to speak on international TV, and he was gonna take me up on that. Chris, if you're out there, we sure will look forward to your speech the next time. Let's go to communications.
Move, accept, and file.
All right, motion made. Is there a second? Now, I'd like, I'd like to pull numbers 10 and 11. Is there any others?
Six and seven.
Seven and eight.
Six, six, seven, and eight, and 10 and 11. Any further? All right, then the motion would be to accept and file 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 9, and 12. On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Okay, let's just start with number six. Ms. Whitby, would you read that by title, and then let the council member ask that be pulled, choose their, you know, choose their desire.
Yes, sir. This is a letter to Mayor Hayes and the city council from Robert Boils. It's regarding the master street plan and sidewalks in regard to North Hills Boulevard.
Accept and file, please.
Second.
Come after you. Well, you want her to read it in entirety. Yeah, why don't you read it in its entirety? That way, it'll be a little bit more easy to understand.
This is a memorandum dated September 16th. This memorandum is in response to Alderman Hyde's request that I research master street plans and be prepared to answer questions regarding North Hills Boulevard and sidewalks. I find that North Hills Boulevard was shown as a minor arterial in 1957. In 1977, a revision to the plan was accomplished. They continued this classification and also included a typical cross-section illustrating sidewalks on both sides of the street, attached to copies of the early master street plans supporting these findings. The current plan was revised in 1998, and again, North Hills Boulevard is shown as a minor arterial, and the proposed future cross-section is for a four-lane facility with sidewalks on either side. I contacted Richard McGee, director of Metro Plan, who was serving on the planning commission around 1980. Mr. McGee reported that Metropolitan requested only a two-lane roadway without sidewalks as a waiver of the established plan. Arthur Thomas, agent before the commission, argued that the roadway would be widened in the future, and that would be the time to install sidewalks.
Thank you.
Which voter?
Move, accept, and file.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Number seven?
And get her to read that in its entirety, please.
Okay, this is a memorandum to Mayor Hayes and the city council dated September 17th from Mike Smith, chief city engineer, regarding proposed sidewalk construction, North Hills Boulevard. Attached are drawings and the cost estimate for constructing a typical five-foot wide sidewalk, six-foot wide if between a wall and the street curb on North Hills Boulevard. One drawing and cost estimate is for the east side of North Hills, and one drawing and cost estimate is for the west side. The sidewalk is as listed in the 2003 sidewalk program, but a decision on which side of the street to place the sidewalk is in debate. I believe the city's master street plan calls for a sidewalk on both sides.
Move, accept, and file, please.
Second. Mayor, it's our intention to, concerning the proposed sidewalk construction on North Hills Boulevard, to hold a public hearing at the next council meeting concerning that sidewalk. This document here is merely a, it shows where the planned sidewalks were to be, either on the east or the west side, and what the cost would be in relationship to either they were established on the east or the west. And so, what we would like to do is hold a public hearing in this council chamber at the next council meeting concerning that proposed sidewalk.
We don't have a problem with that. In fact, that's fine. The only thing I need to ask you is, is there any legislation that you intend to file in connection with that public hearing? Or do you just...
No.
Okay, so you just want to listen to the community that might be interested in speaking on this issue?
That's correct. Mayor, one of the things we discovered through visiting folks on North Hills, particularly those on the east side, is there were a number of misconceptions. I think communications number six probably cleared up one of those, in that sidewalks were planned for both sides of North Hills from day one, and they still are in the master plan, and call for, in our master plan. The other thing is, Mr. Hyde and I committed to the folks that we would get hard figures from Mr. Smith regarding how much construction we run. There was a fluid figure on how much pedestrian bridge would cost, and there was misunderstanding between both of us. So, I think once that information came out, and it's in communication number seven, you'll find the estimate for the west side from the bridge back to Sherwood is $68,000. The sidewalk portion on the east side of North Hills from Sherwood to Bridge is $50,000. But the pedestrian bridge is $90,000, making it $140,000. So, you know, that makes us stop and relook at that project, and probably look back at going to the west side. And we need to give the folks from the west side of that street an opportunity to at least have some input into this. Our intent is to build a sidewalk, and that's what we're gonna do. It may be in the middle of the street, but we're gonna build a sidewalk.
Let me add...
Won't be in the middle of the street.
Won't be in the middle of the street. We're not gonna build an island. One of the things I wanted to point out, that this document that Mr. Smith generated showing the cost, was originally, he gave me an estimate, or gave us an estimate, of the new pedestrian walkway on the west side of North Hills, at Five Mile Creek on that bridge, at approximately $40,000, $45,000. And recently, he's told me that that walkway will cost as much as $90,000. So that's caused us to do some rethinking on the total cost of installation of sidewalks, whether it be on the east or the west. And we've got to make sure that we do use our award funds wisely. And so, we're gonna take another hard look at, and we want the people on the west side to have some input as to what their, what their thoughts are about the sidewalk going on the west side. So that's why we intend to have, hold that public hearing at the next council meeting.
While we're discussing it, I know Alderman Whitaker knows that this is the second time around. We did this once before. And I think we'll just use names. Look, Matthews, Ed Noel, and we pull back. And there's people here tonight that want to speak on that. Are you gonna give them a chance to speak tonight, or they have to wait till...
I think it'd be appropriate to just, you know, everybody had the same opportunity, so we'll just do it next time.
So you don't want them to speak tonight? So they might...
Oh, yeah, they can stay at the end of the council meeting if they want to, and they can speak.
I hope they'll stay, because I have one on how we decide where these are gonna be.
Any further comments on this? One of the things that, you know, I know that I've received, received a few phone calls, and I'd just simply like to indicate, you know, that I know that there are some folks that are concerned about that. But I very much support sidewalks, and certainly on that thoroughfare, I think it's needed. I'm not sure that I understand all the details about which side versus the other, but I just wanted to make sure that those knew what my feelings were, and that is that I certainly support the two council members, and I support sidewalks. I hope that folks who are unhappy with that decision can help us work through this in the best way possible to provide those facilities in a way that would most address the needs of the overall community, and particularly the neighbors in that area. So we will try to work through that and do the best we can to come up with as much input as people are intending to do, either tonight at the public comment section, or next week, excuse me, two weeks. No, actually, it'll be three, I believe. Now, the second Monday of next month will be when the council will meet. With that, Ms. Whitby, would you please note that there will be a public hearing on the North Hill sidewalk plan, and make sure that everyone's aware that they'll have an opportunity to comment then.
Did we vote?
No.
Pardon?
You still need to vote.
On accepting and filing, the communication?
Yes, sir.
All right, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Number eight? Who asked that to speak?
I asked.
All right, could you read that by title, and then see if all of Hyde wants to do any more?
Yes, sir. This is a letter to Mayor Hayes and the city council from Robert Boils, stated September 18th, regarding city awarded funds for the Campbell Lake Trail.
Move, accept, and file.
We're excited about our trails, and this is just one more step in that direction. So I know Alderman Hyde is a biker, and a lot of folks are enjoying those trails. So I commend them to you, and we keep an after it. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Number eight? Who asked that to speak?
I asked.
All right, could you read that by title, and then see if all of Hyde wants to do any more?
Yes, sir. This is a letter to Mayor Hayes and the city council from Robert Boils, stated September 18th, regarding city awarded funds for the Campbell Lake Trail.
Move, accept, and file.
We're excited about our trails, and this is just one more step in that direction. So I know Alderman Hyde is a biker, and a lot of folks are enjoying those trails. So I commend them to you, and we keep an after it. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Number 10?
Would you please read it by title?
Yes, sir. This is a letter dated September 22nd to the members of the city council. It is from Mayor Hayes, and it's regarding the shops at North Hills, TIP district.
Let me paraphrase that. I certainly want to make that available for anybody to read it. And I would suggest that you read it in conjunction with item number 10. So I'd Just a brief explanation so those in the audience at home may be aware. It simply is mainly was created, as I understand its history, to help revitalize urban areas that have been pretty challenged in terms of infrastructure and that the property is either been abandoned or undeveloped and that this is an inducement to try to cause developers to be able to make the numbers work in terms of improving, by and large, the infrastructure, perhaps some things that might lead to the ability of the market to then join with the developer in causing a project that might otherwise not be created to be created. The basic approach is essentially any increase in the taxing, real estate taxes that would be gained as a result of the increased value of the development for a period not to exceed 25 years could be directed on an annual basis toward funding, by and large, the improvements and things that might be associated with the development that might not otherwise cause it to occur. Obviously, there is always a debate as to whether without that it would or would not occur and that has to be a judgment call that the Arkansas law has given to the city councils of the communities in which these are sought to be created. The difficulty with these is that, you know, the prime benefactor of the property taxes is the school districts that lie within the communities that create these and thus there is an inbred, perhaps, conflict when one has to go through the decision-making process of whether or not to create a Tiff because it certainly would affect the school district or could affect the school district. And I know one of the things that I have said time and time again in my discussions with James Smith and I appreciate James being here, Teresa Burrow, and I see several other members of the North Hill Rock School Board that are present, is, you know, that I would be very, as a mayor, would be very reluctant to support the creation of any Tiff that I strongly felt the project might go forward otherwise. The shops at North Hills is one that I do not feel would go forward without the creation of this. In my letter, I recite, you know, the fact that for over 40 years, this area of Dark Hollow has gone undeveloped. It's low-lying, flood-prone, some parts of it would be considered swamp. The only development that's occurred out there, to my knowledge, at least in the end, closest to I-40, which is, by the way, one of the most heavily-traveled sections of real estate in the state, has been a driving range. So I am very convinced that the reasons that, at least in my mind, that this hasn't been developed, although it's been in this position for over 40 years, is in part because of its access and in part because of the topography of the land. And I truly believe at this point that it may be another 40 years if something's not done to kickstart the development of that area of our city. I know it's been reported that the project originally was looked at in the terms of perhaps $80 million. I know that the developer is even looking to perhaps try to make a presentation to the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission to make that available or some of their real estate available for the nature center. As this council recalls, we have also made available certain parts of our real estate on the river for the nature center and that would be a tremendous economic draw. You know, many people know, I'm sure, that although it is the shops at North Hills, there are a variety of retailers that would go in there and I think the most well-known has been announced and that's the operation out of Springfield, Missouri, known as Bass Pro. And the excitement about that has really caused the project to perhaps expand in scope and when I originally was made aware that this was what the developer felt was necessary and I became convinced that it sure appeared to me that it would be necessary, you know, started discussions with our school district and in fact appeared before the district on the 15th of May, as reflected in my letter. I was there for two purposes, one to discuss the surfacing of the stadium behind the West Campus and another to talk about this tax increment financing district. At that time, I indicated to the school district that the developer had not yet presented to me any concrete information regarding the need for improvements, how much those improvements would cost, what they planned to do with it, and that as soon as I learned that, that I would come back to the school district and share with the school board that information and would certainly give them an opportunity because I respect them and I respect their position, I respect the efforts that they're going through. And again, I chronicle in one or both of my letters that our school district is going through very challenging times. Several budget cuts have occurred and they're facing a over $3 million cutting session and so I know it's extremely painful for them in what they're facing right now. And so, you know, in making our decision, it certainly is one that's very weighty and one that, you know, we have to look at very closely. And I continued to share with Mr. Smith and perhaps other members of the board that, you know, because of what I believe to be the expansion of the project, that the developer took longer than I had anticipated in bringing to me any of the budgetary items that I felt would be definitive enough that I could then return to the school district and bring a legislation to this council upon my belief that it was justifiable for the creation of that district. About a month ago, I learned that the school board was perhaps going to consider a resolution opposing the creation of a tax increment financing district and I really became somewhat concerned because, as I said before, I never had received the information and I had indicated again to the district that as soon as I found out, I would come down there and share with them the details of what I learned. And I think at that time, and of course, Mr. Smith and I know Teresa or whoever in the school board members would like to comment, I'm gonna offer that opportunity in just a minute, that, you know, that that's, that that, you know, I guess what I thought and apparently was an error, that that understanding would at least give me the opportunity to make those presentations when I learned the, enough to where I would actually be, I think, prepared enough to make an actual, or a factual request. Last Thursday night about 9:15, I got a call from Arkansas Democrat Gazette reporter asking me what I thought about the district opposing the creation of any Tiffs in this city and it frankly floored me that I, you know, that I, that what I thought was an understanding was apparently an error and that the district had gone forward and adopted a resolution. I attach a copy of that to my letter to you, opposing the creation of a district. And I frankly felt very slighted because I hadn't been informed that that action was gonna be taken, that I had thought we had somewhat of an understanding. While I would have very much understood a negative vote, I do not and did not understand, you know, what I consider the lack of courtesy in taking up that action and not giving me a chance to be there to at least tell them that I didn't have any more information than I did in May when I came down there in May and told them that I would come back just as soon as I did. I do not have that information at this moment and as soon as I receive it, then it's my intent to file that, file if I do believe after going over with the developer, you know, that that request is justifiable. And I'd like to point out now too, since this is the first time one of these districts is created, will be created, perhaps, perhaps not, that there is what I understand to be a reasonable amount of flexibility. As I mentioned, it can be up to 25 years. As I mentioned, it may not be 100% for 25 years, it may be a partial percentage for a less number of years. You know, I'm as new at this as anybody in the state of Arkansas and so, you know, until I learn what is needed and what's being requested and what I believe is legitimate and then what I will share with this council and with the school district, I don't know where we're going. And that's why it really shocked me and surprised me that the partnership over the last 14 to 15 years that we had forged with our school district came down to a vote that did not even give me and through me, perhaps this city council, the opportunity to at least share what we believed were factual and necessary items to address what, you know, may be one of the biggest opportunities that this city and I hope, community and including the school district would benefit from its existence. So with that, my letter basically says on number 10 that I am asking, I am asking something prematurely. Prematurely because if the school district hadn't acted without giving me a chance to talk, you know, I probably wouldn't have been here with this at this time because I still don't know exactly what I'm gonna ask this council and I don't know exactly what I will be sharing with this community because, as I've said now probably more times than I need to, I'm not prepared. But as soon as I become prepared, I will visit with this council and the community about what I feel and what I understand and what's being requested. But in light of what the school district's actions were, I felt like that, you know, that this council ought to have the opportunity to vote and express their feelings with regard to the possible creation of a district. And so if you'll look at my letter, it says that while I, on the second page, beginning paragraph, while it had been my intention to wait until I had specific details of the infrastructure needs of this retail developer, the action of the school board last Thursday has caused me to seek the endorsement of the city council to support the creation of a Tiff district for this project in principle. And I say that because, you know, I don't know exactly what I'm gonna be asking you in detail because I haven't been asked myself yet. I will interpret a favorable vote to indicate that upon presentation by the developer of a reasonable request that justifies the utilization of funds generated by this Tiff district that the council will then endorse its creation. So I guess I'm gonna ask that I get a motion to accept and file and that I hope that all the council, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council and then I'll ask.
Motion accepted and filed.
Motion made and seconded that we accept and file. You know, before I open this for discussion, Mr. Smith and I believe Ms. Burrow, you know, either one of you or any other member of the board, if you want to, would be, feel free to address the council.
Mayor, point of order, should we go ahead and put the language in with accepting and filing that the council endorses in principle the creation of Tiff district for the project?
I will, I will take this to be part of the motion that the council, you know, by vote will interpret, well, the favorable vote would be that upon the presentation of the developer, a reasonable request that justifies the utilization of the funds of this district, the council will then endorse its creation. Is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Good work.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Certainly not the position I'd like to be in here opposing what you're considering tonight. Let me read for the audience and others watching what the motion was from the board. I had prepared a proposal against the Tiff that I wanted them to consider for a month or so and then come back and express their views. Rather than that, we had a motion made that stated, "The board does not support any tax increment financing that negatively impacts the children of the North Hill Rock School Let me take a little time and go back over some things. I've worked for the school district for 41 years, 15 as your superintendent. I have watched and I've attended almost every city council, city staff meeting in those 15 years. I've watched developments come and go that I was excited to see. I watched the Chamber of Commerce and the city develop an industrial park out east of town. It's almost full. I watched Home Depot and Lowe's, now Walmart Supercenter, Cracker Barrel restaurant, hotels in that area around the hospital go in. Each time, I thought something will come to North Hill Rock that will help the school district. All of those that I mentioned are outside of the North Hill Rock School District boundaries. This city has done a great job in developing that area and other areas, but not a penny is coming to the school district. All of that goes to Gilaski County School District. At the same time, and I've gone back past the last three years, the state of Arkansas has made major cuts in our budget. This last one, just this year, projected to us already over a million dollars cut and they added a million dollars of requirements, so it's a $2 million swing there. I kept looking for something that was coming to North Hill Rock that would help the school district. It hasn't happened. When Bass Pro Shop was announced with the shops out at North Hills, I said, "Maybe this is it." I found out later that it was probably a Tiff, tax increment financing. Mayor was invited in May to come and he graciously did, come back off of vacation, talked to the school board. As he stated, I won't go back over that, what he stated is very true. We have kept it on the agenda each month since then to keep talking about it. And then this last, last meeting, as I said, I prepared a draft and I'm gonna share that with you and I'm not gonna read it, but I'll share it with you. Motion was made then, as I stated a while ago, to oppose any that would hurt the children of this school district. And that's where we stand at this point. We can't keep operating. I've been told over and over, so goes the school district, so goes the city. And I believe that. That amount of money out there for us, if it's an $80 million project dropped in, about $650,000, somewhere between that and $700,000 in today's money, you multiply that out over 25 years and you're talking about a tremendous amount of money. Of course, I won't be here, my time is about up, but children will still be going to school here. Somehow, somewhere, we're gonna have to finance the school district. Maybe it's time to go back to the voters and ask for money there rather than ask for a new business coming into town to pay, help pay for it. Through no one's fault, that I can figure, we've just been left out and continue to be, well, too bad you're not, you weren't getting anything out of it to start with, so what's the difference? Well, there's a big difference in the future. Said I'll share this with you and I'll try to answer any questions that you have. I understand the position you're in. I'm excited about that development out there. It will create jobs. More than likely, most of them will drive in from somewhere else. If any questions I could answer, I'll be glad to try to.
Here, I can take this one.
All right.
Mr. Smith? Of course, I served six and a half years on the board and I was part of the group that hired you 15 years ago. In, since I've been gone, has the school district annexed any additional property?
At the time you were on the board, Mr. Witcher, I think you'll remember, there was a provision where we could annex some small amounts out in the northwestern edge of the city, out of Indian Hills area. There was two or three small areas, like three or four blocks of housing. That has been stopped since then. They no longer would let us do that and we have not annexed anymore.
Has any member of the school board gone to the legislature and tried to seek some relief or help?
Mr. Witcher, I have talked with our legislators and they're very receptive. I've talked to business representatives, they understand the problem we have, but it comes down to really, does Gilaski County give up that property? There's more legislators out there in the areas of us, so they're not gonna willingly give it up. So when you look at that area across from McCain Mall, the way it's developed and even Something's not right about this picture. So I've looked at every way I know I've talked to, said representatives from business, our legislature, and they've been receptive.
To, to my knowledge though, no one has introduced a mill to, to address the problem though. Is, is that right?
Right.
Okay, 'cause I've, I've been watching since I've been gone. All right, so your school board has not gone out there and, and lobbied even to try and they haven't even introduced anything, have they?
We've had some school board members out there before, but not lobbying just, just for that one issue.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, uh, uh, when was the last time that the school district saw a millage increase?
Ninety, nineteen ninety-five, I believe, ninety-four, ninety-five. We've had two since I was superintendent, one in eighty-nine to do air conditioning work and remodel Rich Road and then again in ninety-five. We have restructured at that, taken advantage of the low interest rates. That's kept us going, but we're, we're getting down toward the end now, so.
I know that we're several mill, millage points behind Little Rock, are we not?
Five, and a mill here produces about four hundred and fifty thousand at ninety percent redu-, uh, collection and Little Rock gets well, well beyond that, so there's no comparison there.
Help, help me remember, I, did we pass that ninety-five millage? I know I supported it and helped campaign for it.
Yes, way to it.
And, uh, and I know that when I appeared before, and I seen Ms. Moore sitting out in the audience, when I appeared, uh, before the school board, uh, I know that, that I made comments about equally being disappointed about, you know, that the city, uh, spending infrastructure money, uh, police stations, fire stations, uh, uh, patrolling, uh, in, in areas that our school district did not benefit from. And Ms. Moore asked me, and of course she's here and can comment on that, you know, why I didn't lead an effort to, to increase the size of the, the district. And, you know, I told her I'd be happy to, to link arms with the district and make an effort to do that, but no one ever asked me. Uh, so I, I, I know that, you know, that, that the challenges are there and I certainly appreciate them, but rest assured, if, if I, if I can think of at least the fourteen years I've been here, uh, that the city has partnered and will continue to partner, uh, with the district in trying to find any ways to equitably enhance its revenue. Uh, and, and if, if it takes another millage increase, uh, you know, I'm, you can find me on a street corner waving flags in, in favor of it because I support our district and, and I, I do, uh, you know, I, I, I am saddened by some of the comments that I heard that were made at the, uh, at the board meeting with respect to the feelings of, of me and this city council and, and I, I, I'm, that sadness, uh, you know, does not translate into my, uh, being at the least bit antagonistic toward our district and not appreciating its problem. You know, I'd, I'd like to, to again underline, you know, that until the information is presented to me, I, I really don't know what I'm gonna support. I do know that that property has not developed ever and that there seems to have to be a reason. It's been there, you know, in front of that section of the interstate for lowly forty years or however much that interstate's been opening and, and as we mentioned earlier, uh, you know, uh, ninety percent of zero is, is, is zero. So I, I very much appreciate yours and, and the district's problems and, uh, and, and yet if that project is not built, uh, then none of us benefit. Alvin Gibson?
I guess probably because of, I'm not relate back on, I grew up on Hollywood, uh, Hollywood. Started when I started in the first grade. That boundary is exactly the same place it was when I started in the first grade. Nineteen fifty-two, two through nineteen fifty-seven, every year my family appeared before the North Little Rock School District and says, "Help us, we're a mile and a half from the city limits. Why can't we come to North Little Rock School?" Five years ago, we were turned down, they didn't want any tuition students. I finally ended up going to Little Rock Central and, and graduating. Over this past ten years and back when we used to have even our Monday meetings, I requested we look at this. Little Rock did it. Little Rock got the course to say the city, the, the city boundaries and the school district will be the same. They took a big chunk out of Klaskey County School District. If they can do it, we ought to be able to find a way that we can do it. I'm saddened also, but that, the, all the development has happened out there. But the development happened where the land was available. It happened along an interstate, it happened along a major roads and because a good part of North Little Rock is built up with residential, if you're gonna have industrial property, obviously it's gonna be out there. Uh, I do know that we have children, I, I've had this map in my desk for many years and that simply shows where the school district boundaries are and the city boundaries are. And it's, it's, I, I guess when I speak to some of the people who are out on the eastern side of our city who live in our ward, they go to school at Jacksonville. They got kids that go to Oak Grove and go to Sylvan Hills and, and, and they ask the same question, "Why can't we go to North?" And I always tell them, "I can't answer that question." I've spoken to our legislature several times too and they said, "We've gotta have guidance from somebody besides the city council because it's not a city council issue." Well, it is a city council issue to a degree, but we can't start it. Uh, there's gonna be more development out there. We're working tediously on a development here on, on River Road right now with, with, uh, four developers together, but it, it's not gonna be that, the, the magnitude of the things that you're gonna need to develop your, your, your place. But when we go, it's not only just the area that we're doing there, it's also the area further west because you quickly run out of the North Little Rock School District when you go west.
That's our problem, we're landlocked not only in tax base, but with students. And let me respond, when you said Kulaski County and Little Rock situation, that was done on a student basis for desegregation purposes. What we're talking about is very few students involved in the area that, uh, we mentioned tonight. In the last, about the last twelve years, those students can come to North Little Rock under a school choice plan. Maybe we need to do a better job of letting them know.
Well, the school choice, but you still don't get the total, you don't get, you don't get the property taxes that go with it.
That's correct, but we get funding for the students.
You get, you get funding for the students, but there is a big difference between the two. But as you go out, uh, all the development is sitting there beside I-430, the doctor's offices and stuff, they're being there. That's, that's also in the county school district. And I think it's time that we make a concentrated effort. I mean, when you, it, it's almost, it, it's worse than a shame that you've got the, the entire hump yards, which has thirty-eight hundred employees, I think, in the city of North Little Rock that work there, but yet it's all in the Klaskey County School District. Someone gerrymandered it before nineteen forty-five and, and they're not willing to let go of it. We should say, "We serve this area, the school district serves this area," you virtually wrapped it around it, but yet there is a whole lot more than eighty million dollars in that company and we have not been able to get that. Yet, and I don't know if we will.
Mr. Smith, can I, okay, Alvin Thomas.
I'm just gonna ask, why can't we, why can't the mayor and the council really do everything we can to get those, uh, uh, those boundaries the same? I know, I've been here, you know, twenty-something years, I don't think we've done anything either. What, why can't we?
We can.
But, but we need to do that, we need to join with them and do everything we can to help them 'cause he's right that, uh, so goes the, so the, the school district, so goes, uh, our city.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that. In fact, I responded to Ms. Moore when she asked me why I didn't. I said, "I'd be happy to lock arms with the school district and make that effort." Uh, you know, and that was May fifteenth and I, I'd like to, one quick question, uh, Mr. Smith. Yeah, I know, if I remember right, that the, the courts during the desegregation decision was the one that actually said that Little Rock's boundaries would be co-terminals with the city limits. Did we in our pleadings or any of the court action ever make that request?
We didn't make that request because there was a different reason for it, for it happening.
So we did-
They were looking for students to help balance theirs out. That may happen in the future for us.
Have we ever considered a court action to try to make sure, to see if there's any legal reasoning that our, our school, uh, boundaries could be co-terminals with our city limits?
I've talked with our attorney and it didn't seem reasonable at the time to do that and that's a very expensive proposition.
One of the things, and I'd just like to, 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 to really come back to, to what upset me and, and, and that was not anything that, almost not anything that we've been talking about with the exception of the fact, you know, that, that I, I was never informed and, and had an opportunity to come down and, and share something I wasn't even prepared to share. So that, that was what, you know, frustrated me and, and, and for that, you know, I'm, I'm certainly, uh, you know, I, I hope we can get over, you know, the, the lack of ability to communicate and, and that was the, the frustration that I was experiencing. I thought we'd had a communication understanding and I found out that that didn't take place and that was the thing that really, more than anything else, bothered me.
Well, and bothers me too, but I did bring down a proposal a week ahead of time before the last meeting for your consideration and, uh, we miscommunicated somehow. Now, I know you get a lot of correspondence and that didn't come to the top of the, top of the stack, so.
Anybody, any other council?
I just, why can't we begin here and now to try to, um, go forward and try to get this done and, uh, if attorneys, different ones, suggest ways that we might support that effort and really push for it.
Uh, you know, like I said, on, on the fifteenth of May, I told Ms. Moore I'd be happy to be a part of that effort.
And, and not only us, but everybody that's sitting out there listening that lives in the city of North Little Rock, if you're inside the city boundaries and they don't come to your, the school district doesn't, boundary doesn't come up to you, call your legislators. Our representatives and senators that are here, uh, their numbers are available, I think, in the book downstairs. All four of them available, their numbers are available. Call them and that's them to go in that direction.
I mean, I would agree, Mr. Smith, that there is a travesty. It's the fact that, that there perhaps has not been an effort to try to, uh, more accurately reflect the boundaries of the district with that of the city. I agree with you.
That's right.
And I agree with Alvin Thomas that, that perhaps an effort, either legally or legislatively, it ought to be done and, and if we lose, we lose, but if we don't try, we certainly lose.
I mentioned one other thing I've done far as researching sources of revenue. Millage is always there. That's a good tool for a bond issue and we're going to have to, or someone in near future is going to have to do quite a bit of repair work, renovation of schools, that's, that's a good way to do it. It's not a good one to operate on 'cause it just does not grow that much and it keeps repeating each year, or the expenses, when you collect four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and put that into something, well, you gotta have four hundred and fifty thousand again the next year on top, so. One thing, and it's not popular, I know, but it is possible under a twisting law for a sales tax for a school district now. It's already high, but from what I gathered around that a half cent could probably do many things for us, uh, if forty percent of that's paid for people from outside the district or outside the city. And that would help us tap into this new venture there, with what we already have, so, but the city, and I haven't talked to the board about this, if that was a way to go, the city would have to call the election with the purpose of it, going to the school district, so I don't know if that's what I would recommend now or not, but that's one possibility.
Well, certainly if we communicate with each other, we have a better chance of finding a way to, to mutually help each other and, uh, and, and that's what I hope that what happened last Thursday is not a, a, I hope what's happening tonight is, is, is much more reflective of what we wanna try to do in this community.
Mayor- We wanna continue to work together. We've, we've done this and unfortunately this thing has come up where it's got us on opposite sides for a very good reason, but we still need to try to sit down and work together.
Alvin, Mike?
Uh, I went to a meeting, uh, it was last Thursday at the Arkansas Municipal League and one of the, one of the discussions, uh, or topics during that meeting that I had there was about raising sales taxes versus broadening the tax base and that this came up about how much revenue that, uh, the state would generate, that we would receive if we broadened the tax base to remove some, if not all of the exemptions and the exclusions. And so this, this, this topic had, had discussed last week. The second thing I wanted to just briefly mention, you and I had a meeting with Mr. Martin, Mr. Steele and Ms. Salmon one day at Rotary about this, uh, topic of why North Little Rock School District, uh, didn't receive the, the revenue east of sixty-seven, one sixty-seven. Have you heard anything back from Mr. Steele, Mr. Martin or Ms. Salmon from that discussion that we had that day?
They understand, I, well, I have met with Ms. Salmon and with Jay Martin, our representative. They understand our situation, know nothing. Let me say about the sales tax that state is considering because of the Lakeview lawsuit, don't be surprised if they do raise the sales tax, but most of that money's gonna leave the large cities and go to the smaller areas to support these schools that mainly in the Delta area, so hopefully we will benefit some from it, but I always find that there's strings attached to their money. So I was talking about the possibility maybe of a local sales tax, a half cent or less, something like that.
One of the things that, that I wanna make sure is clarified, and I know that there may be a question out there regarding the value of the district in terms of the funding formula and, uh, and how, you know, that, 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 you know, whether or not it's settled in terms of, uh, of the school district not receiving the income and yet being penalized because of the gross value of the district, uh, you know, I will assure you that if that is not clarified, that I will not support this, uh, uh, funding, uh, or tax increment financing. I know you and I have talked about that and I've shared that with you, uh, and I understand that that's either somewhat clear or will be clarified.
As I understand it from the law now, I checked again last week, if our local assessment goes up, which that would raise it, then state aid to the good, the school district goes down. Talking with legislators, they all assure me that that will be taken care of and I'm assuming, and I know what can happen, when you assume, but I'm assuming that they would do that.
And, and I've, I've been given some indic-, it's been given some indication that this special session in, in December, uh, that issue may very well be addressed.
Right, that, I believe that they will because that just cannot happen.
And I would agree with you. I, I would not support the creation of a district if you didn't receive any income and yet were penalized because of the value, so I, I totally agree with that concern. Any other comments? Uh, there's several other members of the school board, Mr. Smith, I sure wanna give any of them the opportunity to comment if they'd like.
I spoke with the mayor this weekend and, uh, this is my fourth day and of course you just addressed one of my primary concerns, which is the negative impact on the school district with the creation of a TIF, which we're told the legislature's gonna work out and I would have full confidence in that on the basis of you, we've worked with them not from personal experience. Just as an outside observer prior to last Thursday, um, I-
John, you wanna make sure everybody knows who you are?
Uh, my name's John Riley. I'm, uh, newly elected to the North Little Rock School Board last Thursday night was my first meeting. And I, uh, like everyone else, looked with some excitement on the movement we might be seeing within the county on boundaries of school districts. For example, the state legislature gave Jacksonville the opportunity to form their own districts until the courts knocked it down, so I've learned a lot coming to this meeting. The best, you know, uh, the, the best dialogue takes place sometimes in problem resolution. This is a big problem for the school district. There's a great opportunity for the city and, you know, hopefully, uh, through this dialogue, we'll all continue to work together. I know all of y'all are alumnis, former board members, um, but the school district also has problems coming up with funding to, to pursue legal avenues if, if they're not real, so thank you for your leadership and, uh, thank you for your attention to this and hopefully we'll all find a common resolution.
Mayor Hayes, councilmen and patrons, I'm Marty Moore. I've been going to the school board meetings since nineteen eighty and I'm a twelve-year member. This district has survived the threat of consolidation, survived the astronomical fees of a desegregation that is court ordered, survived mandates that were presented by the legislature without any funding. And now I'm really concerned that the ultimate demise of this district could come at the hands of North Little Rock City Council. We are in a world of hurt. When you say, Mayor Hayes, that you could come to us with more information, all you told us in May fifteenth was to tell us how much we would be losing. I've sat here and I've listened to you this evening talking about what a viable piece of property that is. And I cannot believe that it will require a TIF to be able to develop it. If that TIF does happen, what will happen is that you are effectively a- If that TIP does happen, what will happen is that you are effectively eliminating our capacity to have any venue from that piece of property in a city that is already landlocked. I go way back to the consolidation where those boundaries were created by the court. They were for desegregation and also for funding. It is extremely unlikely that we would ever be able to change the boundaries of this funding for Pulaski County or for us. Pulaski County depends on that area as much as we do, and they are in the hole also. And it would take us a lot of money, and we don't have the wherewithal, to spend on attorneys again. And every time one of us goes to court in this county, everybody else does. When I came into this council meeting tonight, someone was coming up behind Mr. Smith and I and said, "Bad school district." Well, I'm here to tell you that can't happen. It can become a bad school district because we're faced with $3.7 million worth of cuts after having to cut $2 million already. And we will not become a viable school district in a city that is trying to be stable and vibrant. We are aging, and people are not going to come to a city that does not have a good school district. And we have done everything within our power to keep this district afloat. We have been good stewards, but we can't even hardly afford to pay our teachers, and they have been loyal to us. So, when you make this decision, I hope you consider what it means to the children of this district. Because all I'm hearing is that we just don't know how much we're going to lose. And that is a major difficulty for me to understand. And I am sorry that we did not come to you before this, although we gave you a copy of our resolution, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry that we didn't come before you, but it doesn't take, it doesn't make sense for me to wait for the acts to fall before I make a stand. And you're telling us we're going to lose money, and that's all that matters to me. And telling us that we could go somewhere else to get it, when we don't even have the money to do it, is not to me viable either.
Mayor Hayes, members of the city council, I'm Teresa Burl. Newly elected president of the school board this year. On last Thursday evening, we did take a position that is in opposition of the tax incremental financing mechanism that you're considering. Basically, we are advocates for children, and based on the information, we understand the interpretation of the law as it stands today and the benefits the district will lose primarily if our wealth index goes up and our state funding goes away, as well as the real estate taxes that could possibly be delayed to the school district for 25 years. I just want to say that we made a decision as a board that was in the best interest of children, and we certainly have faced a lot of difficult times. Many of you reiterated tonight that the boundaries are the same. You're absolutely right. However, we have been under a court desegregation plan for a number of years, and we will have to seek direction. And our council, the school council, has told us it would be quite costly to look at some of the things we've discussed tonight. But we're hoping that even though we are on different sides of this issue tonight, that we can continue to work together as a school district and as a city. We are going to give you our commitment to look at some of the things that you brought up tonight, and certainly, the leadership from Mr. Smith and our school district have, he has brought us recommendations that we have looked at in the past, and we hope that we can come to some common ground where we would be able to partner. And, Mr. Mayor, we are listening tonight and hearing that if you see that it's going to impact our wealth funding, and if the legislatures are not successful in December in getting the law changed so that it won't implement, impact our funding, then we are hearing that you would not support it at the cost of losing money to the school district, and we appreciate that. I just want to say tonight, we are firmly committed in finding ways that will help our school district continue to grow and continue to be a viable school district in this community. And at this time, it's in the school district's best interest not to support this legislation as it stands tonight. But we are willing to lock hands with you and find a way to come up with some alternative sources, whether they be the sales tax initiative that Mr. Smith talked about tonight, or some other case that we might be able to come up with. Certainly, the city attorney, along with the school district's attorney, can talk and see if there's some common ground. And Mayor Hayes, I do want to apologize to you tonight for the miscommunication and you not being notified of our discussion, but it has been on our agenda every month since you presented what you knew on the initiative. But at this time, I just want to say that we are firmly committed to be advocates for children, and in our funding, the way we receive funding right now, it is primarily, basically, with sales tax and from state revenue. And we're looking at, excuse me, from state taxes, real estate taxes, as well as the state funding. So, the only piece of property that we're dealing with tonight is the one that we know that we would receive as a district income from. And we are on the other side of the position, but we want to tell you that we are dedicated to children and hoping that we can find some common ground, if there is any, and hopefully in December, we'll have better answers and maybe we will not be impacted from our state funding.
Alderman Gibson?
I think, as I spoke to our two representatives and even several senators, there's a unique opportunity this year. It's a shame that in Pulaski County, you have a student who lives within three miles of England. He gets on a school bus and goes to junior high and high school at Seven Hills. Brought this to the governor's attention last year, and I brought it to ours, is that they're going to redraw the lines of a tremendous amount of school districts in Arkansas. And Pulaski County as a whole does not need to be overlooked. We have people who live in Lone Oak County, in two sections, outside of Jacksonville and the other side of Scott, who live much closer to other schools, but they don't go there. They have to come in to Pulaski County and go to school. And that's a shame. That's not fair to those students at all. I happened to grow up out there, but I grew up with a lot of people that lived out there. And we've got, as a body, have got to work together. We have got an area in east Pulaski County that is probably some of the best prime residential property out there. We have two things against us. One of them is mosquitoes, and we can't do a lot about that. But we can do something about the schools. You know, I'm not sure if you were a parent that lived around Willow Beach or Old River Lake, and you had children, that if you felt real good about putting them on a bus to Scott so they could ride a bus to Seven Hills to school, and how much the parents could be involved because their kids were going that far away from school. It's not fair to the people who live in east Pulaski County. What is going on now, it's up to us to work with the legislators and said, "When you start worrying about putting together a school districts over in eastern Arkansas or somewhere else, don't overlook Pulaski County because we've got problems here. It's not fair to the children. They have to get on the bus at 6:15 and get home well after dark."
Before I call for a vote, I just want to say that I know that reasonable people do differ, and I would hope that whatever the vote is tonight, that the school district would recognize that this city council, and I know this mayor thinks very strongly of our children, and supports, as I chronicled in our letter, perhaps as much if not more so than, you know, many other administrations have done with other school districts. And so, I would like to thank Ms. Burl for the comments that she made, and would hope that, you know, that the board would not think that we don't feel very strongly about our young people and would do everything we can. And again, I'd like to underline the fact that it's certainly my belief at this point that that may be growing mosquitoes out there for another 30, 40 years if we didn't find a way to help support infrastructure needs that might be required to do that. So, again, it's a tough choice, and I think the dialogue that we've had tonight has been worthwhile. You know, I'm sorry it started out last Thursday the way it did. I certainly appreciate the comments that were made tonight. And with that, Ms. Whitby, would you call a motion on item number 10? Alderman Yielding, did you have?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
You know, first of all, you know, you've mentioned legislation. There is no legislation, as the mayor said, we don't know the impact. So, you know, I want to make that statement, there is no legislation. We don't know the impact. We don't know what they're going to ask for. You know, second of all, talking about, I guess, you were insinuating that you're for children and we're not. This city spends over a mill of what you get. You said you got $450,000 a mill. We spend that every year on the school district. We spend more than that. We spend over $400,000 a year for school resource officers. This city put that in place long before my time.
1992.
1992. Without that, I dare say where this school district would be. It was definitely the right thing to do. But the city does it. You know, I like to say that, you know, I don't mean this in any way other than, you know, it's your responsibility to run the school district, and it's your responsibility to do these things that some of these aldermen have said. It's not the city's. It's not the mayor's. We'll help you do whatever you need to do, but it's not our responsibility to do that. It's our responsibility to run the city, to have police and fire in streets and other services that the city does. The school district is run by the school board, and it's your responsibility to do that. We will help you. I know without the people here on this city council, through the years, there wouldn't have been any millage increases passed. Because I know way before, when I was still in school, who was up there pushing the millage increases? It was city officials, it was business people, the same business people that understand the impact of what this development would do for the city of North Little Rock. And, you know, and also, as the mayor said, I mean, you're not getting anything now. Nobody's going to get anything if it's not built. Nobody. It'll be somewhere else. It'll be over at Otter Creek or who knows where, but it won't be in North Little Rock. There won't be any development on the edges of anything. There won't be any hotels or everything else that you know is going to be, come with this that is not going to be in the tax increment financing district. So, while I understand the problem that you have, I understand the whole education problem that the whole state has right now, and I think there's a lot of things that we don't know what's going to happen, and the legislature has to work through those. You know, and in that sense, it's premature to say this is going to happen or that's going to happen education-wise because I don't think anybody in the state knows what's going to happen. But as far as economic development in this city goes, that's one of the things that this city council does. And, you know, you should be out there trying to get the school, you know, if you have to go to court, well, it's going to cost money. Well, you may not be able to do it. Well, you can't just do nothing. You can't just sit back and do nothing. You've got to try. Get somebody to, you know, go to court, get a legislator to introduce the bill, and we will help. I'm sure everybody will help. But you've got to do something. It's got to come from you, not us. You know, I don't think anybody calls y'all if they have a problem with the street or the garbage doesn't get picked up, or if there's a police problem, or whatever. I know they don't call the school board members for that. And by the same token, they don't call me or Murray Witcher anymore if they have a problem with the school district. They call the school board. And you've got to come up and you've got to take a stand, and you've got to do it, and people will help you do it. We all help. We all help all the time in the school district. But don't act like if we're not, you know, if we don't do exactly what you want to do, that we're not for children because that's simply untrue, and that's it.
Well, and I, again, risk repeat that, Mr. Smith, did you want to say something? We don't want to leave anything unsaid.
I know you want to say something.
I appreciate the things he said, but I think there's a misconception about resource officers, and we do appreciate those. We worked together on that back 15 years ago to get started, first in the state. But we have those for about eight months a year on the payroll, and then minus the time that they're in training. And at the same time, we picked up the crossing guards that the city was paying, which is about a $100,000 item. So, I don't want to get into debate over this type of thing because we have been working together, but it's, resource officers' cost is not all hours. They work about four months a year for the city or somewhere else. And then, the crossing guards was a whole nother problem. It was much better for the city for us to take those over, so we did a swap at that time, so I wanted to be sure that was clear.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Sisson shared with me that that crossing guards, Mr. Smith, was $30,000 is what the amount he told me it was at the time.
It may have been then, but it's gone up.
I'm sure it's gone up.
It's gone up quite a bit, and also, the time that it takes to hire those people, that was a problem the city was having going through the hiring procedures.
Uh, on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Gibson votes yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, let me just ask that you read by title of number 11.
Yes, sir. This is a letter dated September 22nd to Mr. James Smith and Ms. Teresa Burl regarding the tax increment financing or TIP district.
Move the adoption. Accept and file.
Move the sep pile, and this one doesn't have the favorable, the other one had the favorable.
Yeah, this is just for information that I've sent to the president of the district and Mr. Smith today. On the motion, accept and file.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I think that takes care of communications, Mr. Smith, and members of the board. I really appreciate y'all being here, and as I said earlier, I certainly hope this dialogue is moving us in a direction where we can work together to try to solve our problems that, you know, I know are critical, and rest assured, the city's not rolling and dough. You know, I'm not, well, we may not be in bad shape, but we're far from being in good shape. So, we look forward to working with you and trying to resolve our problems as best we can because we all care about the kids. Next item, I think we go into old business, Ms. Whitby?
Resolution 0371, Mayor Hayes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, if we could, there's several people here that are here on the 0350 ordinance, maybe 20 or 30 people here for that one issue, and they've been here for an hour and a half.
What is the issue?
That's the reason, that's the manufacturer, the housing issue.
Okay. I don't have a problem unless there's an objection. Ms. Whitby, would you please call that item?
Yes, sir.
This is an ordinance in Minnan, North Little Rock Municipal Code 118 that 67, authorizing the placement of manufactured homes in all six zones to comply with Act 624, 2003. This is the third and final reading.
Okay, and that's Alderman Yielding's?
No.
No, wait a minute. Who's that mine? Which one?
It's yours.
Okay, 0350, I see. That's mine. And you've read that? Do I have a, let me just, let's see if we can get that on. Let me have a motion.
Move for adoption.
Motion made, and seconded. Let me, before I open it for discussion, and we'll certainly allow, you know, the two council members from Ward III, this has been on the agenda for, well, the sixth time on the agenda. And each time, I know there's concern that's been raised about, you know, the possible impact and location it was selected. Mr. Susky, I talked to him earlier today. I also talked to Mr. Boles and asked him to try to find if there was any other location at this 11th hour that we could perhaps substitute at this point. And, Mr. Boles, I don't know if he's here, you, having not talked to me, I don't know if you've got an answer for it.
We could not find a good answer. The next residential district of the city that has the smallest amount of area is R5, and it's scattered throughout the city, it's fairly large areas, and I think that would be more contentious than the original proposal.
Well, what, Mr. Susky, and would you comment on, you know, on my discussion with you about what would happen if we didn't act tonight?
Yes. First of all, if you didn't act tonight, would be a violation of state law. State law requires that by October 1st of this year, that we have a one, at least one zoning classification that allows for manufactured homes. If we do not have this, we'll be in violation of state law. I had an alderman contact me, ask him, "Well, can we make it to where this is only our extraterritorial jurisdiction?" We cannot do that. That would be in violation of state law. It must be something that applies to at least one residential area. could come ask for a building permit for a manufactured home on, on, uh, the first of October. And if we don't have any zone, then they could then get it wherever they want in the city. So it's my advice that we adopt something tonight, or we're in violation of state law.
Let me, before I open it for discussion, you know, let me also indicate what I shared with Alderman Vestal and Alderman Berry. And let me ask this question. You said at least one zoning classification. Could we create a zoning classification called R-nine?
Yes.
All right, well, you know, I know that we can't do it at this moment, because I don't know where R-nine would be. But let me indicate to those of you present that, uh, you know, that, that at this point, based on what I've learned, I'm gonna ask that this legislation be adopted. But I also am going to, uh, direct our planning director along with, uh, his staff to work as hard as he can to come up with some real estate somewhere that perhaps will be unobjectionable. And if we do pass this tonight, then I certainly would support amending this in the, in the very near future to then substitute another zone for this. But I'm afraid that, uh, that based on what I know, and at this, uh, point in our evolution with backing up against the October first deadline, that I'm gonna ask the council to adopt it, but yet look, uh, real hard to try to find some other real estate somewhere that we can then come in and substitute that for what we perhaps will do tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Alderman, uh, Vestal or Alderman Berry.
Mr. Boles?
Yes, sir.
City of Little Rock adopted their legislation to accommodate this legislation.
Yes.
What zone did they put it in?
They allow it in all zones except there are one zone. And they let the market dictate whether you can or not.
In other words, what, Little Rock took the approach that it does not affect one particular small area. It affects the entire city.
They're, they allow it throughout their city, yes.
As opposed to, as opposed to one small residential area? Whereas, uh, we've been looking at this for six months?
At least.
And no one from any other ward, or no one from the planning commission came forward with any other suggestion at times. Is that correct?
Through the planning commission process, we evaluated where we have residentially zoned property, and we, we, uh, brought forward, uh, the recommendation that would have as little impact on the overall city, but yet still comply with state law. And we could have taken the other approach and made it wholesale throughout the city, but we thought that would be, uh, disapproved.
Okay, um, I guess that's really all the quickness I have at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Berry?
I was just wondering, uh, the extraterritorial zoning that we do, if we found a plot of land that already kinda fits the bill, even though they're not in this R-six zoning, if we created a new zone tonight, we still have to go to planning to get it changed, or?
I believe to meet state...
Would we be out of compliance?
Yes. I believe to meet state law, there has to be land zoned residential. So it's, if you have a zoning ordinance, if you have residentially zoned property, one of your zones must be allowing manufactured housing. So we would have to, I think we would have to have, uh, that in our municipality, is the way the state law reads, and it would have to have lots for sale.
One of our existing zones?
We suggested just, it says one of your residential zones, at least one of your residential zones. So to go out and designate an area residential, it would also have to have lots for sale for manufactured, or for housing, which means it would have to be platted property.
It's my understanding that Mr. Tollens doesn't intend to sell any lots for manufactured homes. So we're not, are we not sitting in the same boat again?
We are creating our city's regulation to allow it.
And I don't know, I think that would comply with the law, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I, I don't believe you have to physically have lots for sale. It just has to be an area zoned residential where somebody can put in a lot. I mean, doesn't physically have to have a for-sale sign.
And, uh, Alderman Vestal's correct. You could include more than one, uh, residential district, a zoning district in, in an ordinance.
Like in areas that are, uh, where, where, where the city's gone down, gone through and torn down a lot of houses. We have distressed housing, uh, areas like that where we've got vacant lots. They're nothing more than weed lots. City's gone back through and cut, which is, there's a lot of R-two.
Yeah.
I believe that isn't, that, that, that falls under?
Coming in as ocean zone of R-one and R-two. And so you open up every R-one and R-two zone in the city for it. Now, you know, there, I, I see another, I, I understand there's only one piece of property that's involved in it.
That's correct.
And you have a gentleman who says he's not interested in, in selling it for that. So perhaps the, the, the real solution is to have, ask him to put a bill of assurance on his property that requires a certain size house, which are those assurances all over the city that requires that. And it, and if you did that, that would basically take out the mobile home situation.
Uh, Alderman, uh, I'm, I'm, Alderman's having a chance to talk, so I wanna recognize him.
Well, I appreciate the concern, but, but, uh, Alderman Gibson's saying that means that there would be no mobile homes in the city. Well, but, but you're saying, uh, uh, that they wouldn't be built there. We know in advance that they're not gonna go there.
You know, and if, I'm just, I'm talking about a way to get us to meet the law effective October one.
I, I know, I agree with you.
This is not the long-term solution to it.
I know.
The long-term solution is to try to find some property, and we got a willing landowner who's willing to have his property rezoned into this R-seven or R-eight or R-nine. Because, yes, I agree, there are wonderful fair areas they have in the city. It could work, but they're either R-one or R-two. And then, and you open up a zone, not a piece of property. We have to have, in this case, a piece of, I guess, R-six property. And, and working with them, I, I understand you've got a very willing landowner out there who, who doesn't want the, doesn't want them either, but understands the situation.
Alderman Vestal?
Alderman Witcher, that there is already a bill of assurance that, that would probably restrict the manufactured housing from being, going into that area. And, um, from, at least from what I understand, in talking to some, some of the members of that family who are also involved in that development. But, you know, I, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with you that, that this does not need to impact just this one small area. Cause this, this actually in the long term could be a benefit to the city if we did it the right way.
I agree, but we got, but you've got, you can't rezone someone else's property. We need to go in and create the zone. We need to create the zone and then try to find someone who's willing to have their property zoned into that metal. And there, there's not very many pieces of property in the city that people are willing to do that with.
Excuse me. All right, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Boles. Any other questions, Mr. Boles?
I don't have any up there.
I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, and follow our usual practice. Uh, of course, I think y'all heard what my concern is and what my position is. I don't know what this council's gonna do, but feel free to come to the microphone and comment.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Marcy Rhodes. Um, I've lived in North Little Rock all my life. And as someone in their twenties, purchased a home here in North Little Rock with the hopes of, as a young person, building equity and building life in this city, but eventually having property that would be worth more and being able to profit from buying property in North Little Rock. Um, tonight I've heard y'all talk a lot about miscommunication and misunderstanding and things being passed and going through council before proper notice. You know, we're speaking about the school board at that time, and you not having, uh, notice of things going through. As citizens and residents of that area, we're in the same situation tonight. Um, it came to my attention only Thursday when I called Gary Berry that this was even being talked about at the council. And at that time, I printed up some flyers and passed them around my neighborhood, and none of us knew. Um, tonight, if I may show you, I've passed around a petition, and just since Friday night and until today, we've got twenty-nine signatures. And we have twenty, uh, no, ten. Oh, and here's some more signatures. Um, these additional signatures make thirty-something. Um, and we are, we were able to turn out maybe about fifteen people here tonight with that short a notice. And many others wanted to be here but had prior commitments. Um, one of my concerns initially was what the council was basing this decision on, how many areas they had researched, why specifically this one small area at the end of our street, where we have nine fairly new homes since, uh, the late eighties. And we just have two new homes that sold for the, in the hundred thousands up around the corner, which we were all in hopes would raise our property value and raise the value of the neighborhood. Um, why this one little specific area was being chosen. I've spoken with the Tollens, and I think some people, well, y'all the Tollens, the Tollens will speak for themselves. But it's my understanding that John Tollens Senior, uh, did not know about this and wasn't aware of it, and they aren't in support of their property being rezoned, and, uh, neither are we. If I may let the council have this...
Sure. If you'll, if you'll share that with Ms. Whitby, uh, do you want us to file this as part of the record tonight, or do you wanna keep that?
Filed as part of the record, please, sir.
Okay. If you'd like a copy of that, feel free, uh, to get Ms. Whitby, she'll be happy to make a copy of it.
Okay. Um, basically what I'm asking the council for tonight is if this is passed, and it's passed for our area, that the fair thing to be done would be like Little, the city of Little Rock did, and without discrimination of one area or one neighborhood, but that it be zoned for all of North Little Rock until the council can find a different area, like the mayor suggested, to zone just specifically to address the state's new law, and so that we're in compliance. But for this evening, we could be in compliance and not just be discriminating against our small neighborhood by doing it citywide and not just targeting our area. So if that couldn't be done, then maybe it could be shelved until, uh, we as property owners in that area could make decisions about what we wanna do with our property, um, if we are rezoned, because we need time to make those decisions and still save our equity.
Thank you. Let me, uh, see, Mr. Susky, we're not actually doing a rezoning tonight. We're simply permitting a use in an existing zone.
That's correct, Mayor. There's no rezoning at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone's still open?
Good evening, Mayor, and the members of the city council. I am one of the owners of some nineteen lots that's in this area. My dad is John Tollens, and, uh, this property is in the family. And, uh, as I understand it, when, uh, my dad, uh, filed this with the city in nineteen fifty-nine, that there was a bill of assurance that, uh, for Arrowhead Manor filed with the city planning commission, uh, which, um, kind of negates all of this in the sense that none of this would be allowed anyway, and would that not supersede any of, uh, what, what you're doing this evening? Is that not the case?
Uh, Mayor, first of all, if there is a bill of assurance that is currently in place, then state law specifically says that this law does not trump the bill of assurances. So that's a matter of, you know, we would be complying with state law, and there's that. Uh, if they were filed in nineteen fifty-nine, often bill of assurances have a twenty, twenty-five, thirty, you know, at extreme situations, ninety-nine, uh, year lifespan. So if they were in nineteen fifty-nine, they may or not, may or may not be in effect today, I don't know.
So let's assume they are in effect, and, uh, and then are you saying that we would meet state law, but that this, uh, that the lots that are being, uh, that this use is being permitted?
Right.
You know, would not be able to, uh, put their manufactured homes there, so we've gotten the best of both worlds at least until we try to figure out what to do?
Yeah, I would think under that, we can go into court and argue we've complied with state law. We've created one zone, and we cannot affect what private property owners do through a bill of assurance.
This is my understanding. Now, I want, uh, you know, I want all of the property owners in this area to know that, that Mr. Tollens has no idea, no, he is not going to sell his property to anyone, uh, that would, you know, for, for that sort of thing. And we don't have to.
You're right.
We don't have to, because Arrowhead Manor does not allow that. And so, you know, does anybody else here have any questions of, of, of regarding that?
Let me say this. I think based on what I hear, that we're, we're sort of protecting everybody for at least the interim. Uh, you know, assuming what we've heard is correct. So, you know, with, with that, I'm gonna encourage the council to go ahead, and then also instruct Mr. Boles to try to see if we can find something that would, uh, uh, you know, that would be more responsive perhaps than what we're doing now. So Alderman Yildin?
Mr. Boles? Yes, sir. Explain to me what zone RT-one is?
Residential, uh, trailer, uh, was created back in the seventies. It allows for mobile home parks, mobile home subdivisions.
Okay.
This law specifically prevents that being the designated zoning class.
Oh, it, it simply prohibits us making that, that, that zone?
You have to take one of your residential classes, we have one through six, and designate one of those as allowing manufactured homes.
Okay.
Good try, Alderman.
Man, I thought I had it.
I know, I know we have to do, I know we have to do this by October, but if, if there's any way we could find out, if I, if we could see the bill of assurance, and we knew that this was absolutely not gonna happen. I mean, you know, anything could happen. I'm, I hate to say that, but, you know, anything could happen. And, and the next thing you know, well, we, we fell into some bad financial times, or we had to sell because we had a death in the family, and, and it was, you know, a bad illness, or, you know, anything like that. And I'd like to know if, if that bill of assurance is in effect. I'd like to see it. But I can't, I can't support it unless I know that exactly that, that we're, you know, we're not being just picked on in this one spot. And, you know, there's absolutely no way that, that the, uh, you know, we got a bunch of neighbors out here, and I, and I didn't even have to contact them. I knew they didn't wanna do it. I knew they didn't want manufactured homes in the back, back there, and I know the home that the, the lady that was speaking, I know the home that she lives in. I've seen it. You know, and, uh, there's two or three two-story homes there, and, and did y'all not build two hundred thousand dollar homes there? Hundred plus? Uh, that's an awful risk to take in a neighborhood. And I just don't think I could take it in mind.
One of the things that, uh, if, if for some reason we find that, that it hadn't been filed, then I think the owner could file it again. Uh, so any event, I, you know, I, I respect what you're saying, Alderman. I think we need to take a vote on this, and, uh, and then hopefully try to rectify it as we can move forward. Uh, uh, any further discussion?
One item, Mayor. If, if this passes tonight, and we find a hiccup between now and next Monday, is that we have a special meeting.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah, I mean, there, I mean, this, it, it, it affects all R-six zones in the city. It just happens to be we have one that's, has vacant property on it. But there are other R-six zones in the city.
Mr. Susky, would you help us find that, uh, working with the owner, that, uh, to see if the bill of assurance has been filed, and, uh, and satisfy us that we don't need to have a special meeting?
Yeah. And one thing I might add, as Mayor, is if there's not one in place, normally they have, uh, mechanisms to amend the bill of assurances within the bill of assurance, or the property owners can get together and refile it.
Hey, well, why don't you, uh, you know, if you'd work with the owner, uh, the Tollens, and see what we can find out, and let us know if we need to call a special meeting. Uh, and Mr. Boles, get to work. Uh, on the, uh, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
No.
Vestal?
No.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
No.
Vestal?
No.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, let's go back, uh, to the beginning of, uh, old business.
Mayor, could, could we get Mr. Smith to pedal some water up this way?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Smith's not here, so maybe we can get, uh...
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, let's go back to the beginning of old business.
Mayor, could we get Mr. Smith to pedal some water up this way?
Sure. Mr. Smith's not here, so maybe we can get-
Can we take a recess?
Take a recess, get our water.
About three minutes, I don't have any throat.
I think some question marks, we've got the people, the residents of this area, they have a kind of question mark about parliamentary procedure. They didn't understand, I think, what just happened.
Okay, well, the legislation was passed and the use was authorized and we're going to try to do what we can. We think you're protected, we're going to ensure that you are. If you're not, then we'll have a special council meeting to try to address what may be a risk. With that, we're adjourned, adjourned. We're reset in three minutes.
Dan, will you open up the, you open up the room? I forget-
Dan, do I have some, do I have some, where's the water?
It's down in the, would you sign these, did you sign all three of these?
Back to your seats. And while you're moving back, Officer David D'Amato, David is undertaking a real exciting project. He introduced this to you and I told him as you come back to your seats that I'd give him a chance to do a little commercial before we got started. Officer?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman?
Yes?
What I'm doing is I'm putting together a project called Holiday in Burns Park Winter Festival. It's the first time it's ever happened here in the city. It's a project that I've been looking at and trying to implement it over the last nine years. Tried to get other organizations and groups interested in doing this. Bowles said it's a great idea, it's wonderful, but that's as far as it usually goes. So what I've decided to do is to do it myself. I'm the committee chairman for the Holiday in Burns Park Winter Festival. It is going to happen, it's going to start the 14th of December, run through the 24th actively. We're going to have a festival going on on 19th and 20th of December. The lights are going to be on like Motel 6 until after the first of the year. We're going to be collecting money, it'll be $5 for cars coming through, $10 for vans and buses. Proceeds will be going to Toys for Tots this year. Every week after that, we're going to choose another charity and those proceeds will go to that specific charity. We're also going to have things called charity trees. The trees are going to be out there from different organizations, different charities. And what we're going to do is going to have the children from the school district make ornaments. Those ornaments are going to be collected and then they're going to be sold for a dollar. What we're going to do is we're going to sell them to the public, they take those ornaments, they put them on that specific tree that they want to, whether it's the Heart Foundation, Kidney Foundation, Cancer Foundation, whatever. At the end of the festival, we're going to count the ornaments that are on that tree. The number of ornaments, according to a dollar, will go to that specific foundation. So if you have 500 ornaments on a tree, that organization will get $500. So it's another way to get other charities involved in this organizational type activity. With the festival itself, we're also going to have candy activities going on all the time. It's going to be some type of involvement with organizations such as the churches coming out and singing Christmas carols, having entertainment for people coming out, dressing up in period costumes, wandering through the park, singing Christmas carols, have the bands involved from the different high schools. But I've had a plant done up by carpenters like out of Tulsa, Oklahoma. They're a company that does a lot of this type of activity. In fact, they're the ones who put together the displays over in Pine Bluff, if anybody has seen those. But all I'm asking for is participation and the support of the council. And if they could go out and ask some of the people that they have that are in their areas, they will possibly be interested in putting a display in the park. We've got plenty of volunteers, Fritz Friedel's already taken care of that. We need displays. I personally have gone out and committed at least 30 people so far and another 30 more are on my list to say yes. I've actually got hard commitments on 30 of them. I'm looking at 60 and I've got 30 more that have already given their tentative, yes, we're going to put something in the park. So I've got a display here. I don't know if everybody can see that. It pretty much gives a visual representation as to what's going to happen and what's going to appear in the park. It's not exactly how it's going to be, but at least gives you an idea of what to expect.
Why don't you tell people, Officer, what that, what portion of the park that is? You might want to hold it up because it was being reflected on television or on our government access channel. Hold it up where that camera right up there can see it and let them pan in and tell them just what section of the park that is.
It's going to be on Funland Drive, running from the girls softball complex all the way to military and it's going to run in that direction one way. What we're going to do is we're going to have a collection point at the split where it splits off from the back loop to the front loop on Joe K. Polk, going on to Funland Drive. And that's where we're going to have our collection point and where everybody's going to start driving through. Again, another good thing about that is too, is that this area is clearly visible from the interstate. There is no mistaking what's going on and the lights are going to be visible to anyone going through. I don't think there's going to be a problem with being able to get people to drive into it. It's going to be a festival and that's going to grow over a period of time. We've got a five-year plan implemented. After five years, I think this is probably going to be bigger than any of us could ever possibly imagine. It's going to be a boon for the city, it's going to bring revenue, it's going to bring people, it's going to bring tourism. People have been asking me, well, how much is this going to bring in? How much is this going to cost? How much is, how many people are going to be able to come through this? I don't know. It's never been done before. We can't guess how much it's going to do, what it's going to, what it's going to cost and how much money we might make off of it. Who knows? It's never been done before. So whatever we get the first year, then we can start saying, well, we made this much last year or we did this much last year. But another thing too with the, with the charity things, what we're trying to do is the FOP is sponsoring it in connection with Parks and Recreation, which is gracious enough to let us go in and do a lot of things inside the park. But we're going to also be taking the money that we derive from this and putting it back into the community. FOP is going to be heavily involved in community activities and I'd love to be involved with Habitat for Humanities, but we've got other civic projects that we're working on that we would really like to have the opportunity to get involved with. And this is our avenue to be able to at least try and do that.
We appreciate it, David D'Amato. We sure do thank you for your enthusiasm and we commend the project and hope everybody supports you and enjoys it come Christmas night.
Merry Christmas.
And Happy New Year. Now can we go to the old business?
Yes.
Uh, 71 is being, we refer that to the Historic District Commission, so that's off the agenda, that will be withdrawn then. And whenever we refer Ms. Whitby to another body, feel free to remove that from the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Our 3080, I hope we have at least a working resolution, at least at present out there, so I'm going to withdraw that.
Resolution 0385, Alderman Yildin?
Alderman, let me just indicate to you, I talked to Keith Jones late this afternoon. There are discussions going on. He hopes to have something concrete by the next council meeting, but it is going along the lines of us being able to net in excess of $100,000 as would be matchable funds. So while there's nothing in writing, at this point, it's moving in the direction that we discussed prior to last council meeting. So I would ask that you hold this again until next meeting.
Well, you think they'll have their decision made before the next meeting?
No. I don't think.
That's three weeks from now.
Oh, that take, yeah, if, well, I don't know. I mean, I, you know, I don't know. I would hope that, well, if they have, if they, if they make a decision, to me, it will be along the lines that you and I talked about, that I felt you indicated that you might be able to support. And that would be that we net at least $100,000 and that that be, we were able to match that money with $400,000 for a total of roughly a half a million dollars of benefits to CATA.
Well, and that, and all insurance and transportation, in other words, we weren't going to be out anything.
You know, I mean, the only, the only thing that there is some, a little bit of discussion on, and I understand it has to do with some, not transportation, not insurance, and I forgot what it was, but it wouldn't affect the netting of over $100,000. So, you know, some minor issue that they, that Keith told me that we're talking about, minor in the sense of ultimate dollars. So, you know, I would not support anything less than clearing $100,000 that would be able to roughly benefit us a half a million.
Okay, I'll hold it.
Thank you.
Ordinance 0347, Alderman Witcher?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance, we feel in accordance, number 4676, replacing North Lamar Municipal Section 10-4 at 10-44, creating North Lamar Municipal Section 10-45 prohibiting innately wild animals, declaring certain animals to be presumed vicious dogs. This is the third and final reading.
All right, quick, quick note, Mayor. In visiting with Mr. Susky, you know, we believe that we have answered all of Mr. Davis's concerns and they're all accounted for and covered in the ordinance, so I'd like to speak your pass.
First of all, let's get, did you move for adoption?
Yes.
Okay.
After all the amendments and the discussions, please explain what this is going to do and how it's going to affect people in question.
Probably Mr. Susky's in a better position to do that since he's our attorney.
Certainly, Alderman. Essentially what it does, it does two things, more clearly defines what is innately wild animals. Our old ordinance said anything that's innately wild, well, court's going to say, be more specific. What it does in regards to wolf hybrids is it allows an animal control officer to say, I deem that this is a wolf hybrid. If somebody disagrees with that decision, they can appeal to Billy Grace and then if they disagree with that decision, they can appeal to Circuit Court. This is the same process already in place when a dog bites somebody, they declare it vicious. We have, a number of dogs have been declared vicious. We've had one appeal at Circuit Court and it was upheld, the decision of Mr. Grace. But it, so as a result, this is the same process. If the, the people obviously would like to keep their dogs, but what this does, it doesn't authorize us to go in and seize the dogs. And I say us, the animal control. What it does is allows them to be declared vicious. If they are declared vicious, they don't lose their dogs, they just have to treat their dogs as other dogs when they're declared vicious. That's it, on a leash or in an enclosed structure. So their dogs are not moved from town if they're declared vicious. And if it goes to Circuit Court and if it's upheld, they just have to keep them in an enclosed structure on a leash.
Alderman Thomas?
How would Mr. Grace determine this wolfhound, how would he determine that?
He would, he could take a look at it, take a look at medical information. Obviously, you know, as I told him, if they have a veterinarian saying that it in no way, shape or form, shape or form has any wolf in them, it'd be very dispositive, a variety of ways to take a look at it. And then if Mr. Grace on any of these animals declares it to be a vicious dog because it's a wolf hybrid, if they disagree with it, they can appeal to Circuit Court just like a gentleman did last week.
Of course, that's costly.
Alderman Barry?
What's going to happen with these two specific animals?
Once again, if a determination is made they're declared vicious, they can appeal to Circuit Court. Realize, they've already taken us to Circuit Court on this before. If they're, then it goes Circuit Court, a dog, a judge makes a decision. If they're a wolf hybrid, they keep their dogs, it just must be on a leash or in an enclosed structure. If the judge says it is not a wolf hybrid, then they can have, they can be treated like any old dog running around the street, just so it has a leash or it's in their backyard.
Alderman Bestel and Alderman Height, what was the decision from when they took it to court?
When they took it to court, their argument was that our ordinance was void for vagueness. It's too vague. We looked at it and said, we agree. It's too vague to criminally prosecute. So as a result, that's how the dialogue started to get this ordinance. So that basically the court at this time, we believe will dismiss it because-